Because I said.
Because I made a statement.
We're recording this all stuff, just so y'all know.
I said I own property in the city, that is all that I said. I don't think it's disordered.
Okay, now, with what I was getting at, with the raising of hands, all I wanted was a show. Do any, does anyone in here know? The millage rates inside the city, outside of the city of Mountain Pine, the royal areas that's in Mountain Pine School District. Your millage rate is forty-three point five. Inside the city, our millage rate that we pay is forty-eight point five. The royal area, thirty-nine point nine of that goes to the school. Three point six goes to the county. Inside the city of Mountain Pine, when we say you don't pay the same taxes as us, it's because we pay thirty-nine point nine to the school, thirty, or three point six to the county, and five mills goes back into the city. That is what helps us pay for the dumpsters that are out here for the citizens of Mountain Pine. That's why people outside of the city cannot come in and just start dumping in our dumpsters. Because it's not fair. Because with that, what that is, the municipal tax funding of local services. The municipal tax, or local or municipal tax, the revenue generated from the municipal tax is utilized to fund essential local services such as sanitation, street lighting, road maintenance, water supply, wastewater, and other civic amenities like our dumpsters. And with that being said, I hope everybody can understand why, when we say you don't pay the same taxes as we pay, you don't. Not, your taxes don't all come into the city of Mountain Pine.
Can I ask you a question?
I'll, uh, yes.
No, not fill with the question and answer part.
No, it's pretty direct. I just wonder why she's consistently making eye contact.
I'm sorry, you're just right there. I don't mean anything by it. I don't, I'm just nervously, I'm just like.
I didn't know if I did something.
No, no, no. No, 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 no.
Let's get back to the meeting.
Okay. My next thing is, is there's all this thing on Facebook about all the longs sitting on the city council. And that they're all longs that are up here, and I know that there were people trying to put together a family tree. And it's hard to put together a family tree in a city where, even if you're not blood, if you were born here, raised here, you're family. I have no family out here. My mom was first generation. Second generation. My kid, third generation. Um, and I have no family but my son out here. But I have family in this room, these people I sit with, that I love. There are only that's Melinda Long, her mother Virginia, Chris Awesome is her cousin. I mean, JJ that works at the streets, he was here before Melinda took over as mayor. Your only, there has not been a city council ever that there has not been people related to one another in one way or another that has sat on this board. Bubba Heller right there, his last name is Heller, what's your mom's last name? That was his grandfather that passed away. So yes, everybody out here is Ken in one way or another, even if it ain't my blood. And the fighting has got to stop. We've got to start working together. We've all got to get along. Or things are just not going to work right. We can work, we will work fine. But if everybody's gonna fight against us, it just makes it that much harder. If you have legitimate complaints, come talk to us. Call me. Message me on Facebook. I'll sit down and have an intellectual conversation with you. JJ's known me a long time. One of my kids. My door's always open. The ones that are sitting on this board, we were all elected. We were not appointed by the mayor, like people thought.
Well, the council voted Chris.
We voted Chris in, and that was because, actually, Dorothy, that was her aunt. If it's gonna get someone else, that was wrong. He's the only one that we've had to appoint. We've all held elected positions. We all went, like I said, to Bubba, thank you for telling me to run for alderman or to come to a meeting, because that's what I did. I stepped up and I did that. Anybody can do it. If you live in that ward, if you live in the city and you live in that ward, you can run. Run against me. I mean, I'm in for a good go. If you win, great. If you don't, I'm good. But we were not appointed by the longs, because that seems to be a misconception by a lot of people, that all the longs were here just by appointment. In the year of twenty twenty-one, when Melinda took over as mayor, we had thirty-three thousand dollars left in our sanitation department. Because it got contracted out to Town and Country. We were going broke, quick. Had it not been for that eighty thousand dollars from that American Relief Rescue Plan, I don't know what we would have done. We had to stop that quickly, because we were bleeding money by contracting that out. She figured that out quickly. You know, and another misconception, this is another thing, because I know a lot of stuff is on Facebook, and I know that's why a lot of people are here, because you need to hear it from here. Our water that we get, it all comes from one place. It comes from Hot Springs. There's not two different plants, it's not the city of Mountain Pine gets different water than the outside of Mountain Pine. It all comes from one place, and that's the city of Hot Springs. Am I right with that?
You are correct.
It gets popped into our plant down here, the treatment plant, and then gets popped in. That is, that's pretty much about all I have. I just, I'm tired of the fighting. I'm tired of you know, people not wanting to get along and just want to cause chaos. You wanna know something, go and ask us. On Facebook. Shoot me a text message. Call me. I'll talk. I'll have a conversation with anybody. And that's pretty much all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Update on our water and sewer?
Uh, say today, we got the permit, uh, renewal of the wastewater, so it should be good to go on that. Um, the ropes are aligned, we're gonna get together. Said you know somebody that's gonna be bringing in the trackhoe that we could possibly use, but we're also gonna have to get a cutter for the road, cut the road out. Uh, spoke to JJ on the phone before the meeting, he said we're just gonna replace that whole section of pot. So that way, there's no issues, and we won't have to go back underneath the road ever again.
Okay.
Uh, Arkansas Water called me up today, uh, this afternoon, and said that they had the invoice ready to go for how much it's gonna cost to, uh, camera out the rest of the lines. Uh, I'm gonna get with Epic tomorrow, uh, send them that. I'm also gonna send it to engineers, so that way they have their copy. Water's doing good. Uh, all the back tea samples came back negative, so everybody's got good drinking water, so, other than that.
Like I said, um, anybody interested in Ward Four that lives inside Ward Four, please let us know, it'll be voted on at the next meeting.
What are the, what is Ward Four coverage, so everybody's clear on it?
Nine to eleven, ten to nine. Nine, ten, eleven.
I'll let you know later, Bobby.
And, um, because of the eclipse, the dates we did have before for the dumpsters, they were not delivering any dumpsters that week, so we do have to change it to the twenty-sixth of April through May sixth. I do have a couple of things. I have, um, the council week.
We need, I need to make a resolution that we can contract Jonathan Orlin out
Okay.
um, to help with, uh, the water.
No. Water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
The June second, all in favor? All opposed? Also, there was a, a city worker that came to me, and he asked for there to be a resolution that he could run for alderman. The only thing I would see wrong with that is when it came time for a, a vote that had anything to do with his job, he would, they would be ineligible to vote on it.
I believe that's a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's true, my Jimmy's up here. You'll either, you be in the city council, or you work for the city, you know.
How do you feel?
Uh, you know, when Jimmy Irons was up here.
Uh-huh.
He worked for the city, but he was also employed out of city, so he had to do one of them.
Oh, well, that's, I mean, it states that, he just asked for a resolution, and I told him I was bringing it before y'all, so, you know? And the lawnmower that we was looking at at Horns, they do not do at least a purchase program, so we would have to get, we're gonna go with the Kubota like we have. Is that in agreement?
How much?
It's gonna be a little bit more, because it is a Kubota, and it's, um, they have two, I think the sixty-inch commercial would be the better of the two. And it'll be on a lease to own.
How much, long?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the public can ask.
Nope, I'm gonna amend the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, my guy's name is Tony Room. That's the one that I contacted, he's, I've known him, I worked for Kevin Coakley, most of you know that. Know that I also owned the trackhoe that done this clearing out here when they dedicated this property of Morgan's. So I've run heavy equipment and stuff for fifty-five years. I'm retired. Uh, anyway, this young man here, I've worked with him, he's got a little uh, excavator with some rubber cleats, is what we're talking about. It's a hundred dollars an hour. Is what he'll rent it. He'll leave it out here, of course, he requested to leave it at my house, which is right here at the end of Forest Street. So if we need it, we can call him and bring him out, and he'll be willing to work one or two days a week, or one or two days a month, but leave the little hoe out here. We've got work coming up. He's willing to clean these ditches out that we're talking about. And the cheapest I found, I can say, is a hundred bucks an hour. Most everybody else wanted him to work from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty for that size of machine.
That's with him operating it?
Hey, yes. Him, yeah. He may buy in the fuel, if he doing the operating, or either I'll do the operating. That's the reason for the resolution, and I'm not charging the city for my time as operator. When I have to, or when I, you know, need to operate. I'm retired, y'all.
Who's liability out there?
Who?
Who's liability while you're cleaning out the dits?
His.
His liability is?
Yeah.
Okay.
So he'll be the operating contractor.
Okay.
So he'll furnish the liability. So anyway, you know, y'all, if y'all want me to use this guy, you just, you need to make a motion to approve that we're using, and, you know, if you have somebody else.
I'll make a motion to approving.
My second.
All in favor?
I can't vote.
All opposed?
Cause he's friendly, he's, yeah, he's I, I can't vote for him, yeah.
Any public questions?
Where's that chief?
We are, actually have a new chief, but he has, he's in Tennessee right now. He had to take his mother back and finish gathering some stuff, and then he'll come back and finish the paperwork.
I have a question.
Oh, hang on.
Last call.
Uh-huh.
We were meeting here over the crypto mine.
Uh-huh.
And the public was kind of promised
Yes, they promised.
that there would be something done about.
A barrier.
Well,
Still no barrier.
I'm waiting to hear, I thought the city would follow up on it. And people have asked me about it, and that's been quite some time, it's supposed to have been done by the end of the year, last year.
Yes, it was.
And summer's coming on.
And it affects the north side.
And the north side is going to get worse.
Yes. Actually.
And I had two parts to this.
Okay, actually, I was, we need to go back to the minutes to show that's what they said, but I know that's what they said too.
The other part was, I would like to know how much money the city has made off the crypto mine.
Uh, about forty-six dollars a month on their water bill.
And what about on the kickback from their electric bill?
Kickback on the water.
We get franchise tax.
Franchise tax.
Okay.
Have we received any? No?
No increase.
But if I know they're generating.
As a matter of fact, our Summit Gas franchise has, has decreased as well.
All right, now, I know that they're generating energy down there. So they should, we should be getting a lot more money, and why isn't it being followed up on?
Um, now, when they pig back up and start using water, their water bill will go back.
No, I'm not talking about water, I'm talking about electricity. Cause I pay it, you, you pull your bill out every month, and it's on there, how much you pay the city.
Yes, yes.
No increase.
That's something we need to check on.
Then y'all need to find out, cause you're losing lots of money.
I don't, I don't think it generates electricity, it just uses a lot of electricity.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Just like I use electricity at home. I pay more taxes, look at your bill, y'all.
See, they just use that and generating like the dam.
Yeah.
The dam generates.
Well, wait a minute though, but if she lives in the county.
She's still paying taxes somewhere.
Okay, to the county.
Just like we pay ours to the city.
Okay.
So the city is losing lots of money off of it.
So is it just me, or did anybody else in the city limits receive a phone call, or they had a voice message left by energy, saying the power bill's gonna be going down? It dropped down like thirteen dollars a month or something.
Supposed to go down seven percent.
Seven percent?
Seven percent.
Now, is that not a result of the?
They said it on the news, that they, they went up twenty-six percent last year, it's supposed to go down seven percent, it's coming up here.
Okay, so that was Arkansas customers altogether.
Energy, no, energy customers.
Well, the, the answer is, what you're talking about, we only get franchise taxes through energy. We don't get anything off of how much electricity they use up there. Uh, I think we, it was a question brought before, does our franchise fluctuate with the amount of energy is being used, that, you know, energy collects money off of? And we never have. I, I don't think it does. I don't think it, I think it's, it's a set amount.
I pay my bill every month, I can pull out my bills from the last six months, and they're different. The more I use.
It's based off a percentage.
But that's, but, yeah, that's based off of percentage for your taxes as to the amount of use. But the only thing we collect from energy off of their deal is the franchise tax.
Right.
That they, they pay, but it, I think it's a set rate.
It's like point zero four percent?
Yeah, not, you know, not, uh, where it won't fluctuate, if energy, if somebody uses a whole lot more energy, your franchise tax is not gonna reflect that.
Are y'all getting any money from the crypto mines from it?
No, nothing but water.
So they don't have to pay them?
They, they pay water and occupation.
They don't pay any franchise taxes?
They have to.
They have to, yeah, there's no way they're not.
It's incorporated from here.
And I'm, I'm seeing a bill, but I'm assuming it's hot. I don't know.
Nothing on the franchise tax has increased, as far as.
But do we even get a franchise tax through that crypto?
Not them personally, no.
Why not?
We get energy, AT&T, Summit Gas, is what we get.
I think we call on our definition of franchises, if they're, if they're even required to pay us a franchise, I know the utility companies are. Cable people are. I don't know about, uh.
They put in big power, they're direct.
Yeah, they, they're making their own.
They get all their own stuff direct. They don't come through Mountain Pine Service, they're direct.
But if.
They paid a lot of money to get that service.
Yeah, we really don't have a franchise.
No, you don't have anything to do.
I mean, same, we have a franchise with Morgan too. I mean, you know, that's like a company of its own.
It's a.
That it sells a product to the, to the public, you know, those chips. So it.
I got one last question for y'all. On this, uh, y'all mentioned it two or three times, and I just don't understand. Like on this alderman position y'all have open, see, I own property on Tenth Street. So that would leave it open where I could be an alderman.
If you live, if you live there.
I, no, I don't understand. I just, I'm not arguing with y'all, I just got questions.
Okay.
Cause my mind, I have a lot of time.
I'm not arguing.
I know, I'm having a time of understa- understanding, cause Morgan was mayor. So that was right about that, right?
Yeah.
He was.
Morgan was mayor. And I know Morgan didn't live in Mountain Pine.
No, he didn't.
And Morgan was mayor, right?
Yeah.
There was also a reason that he dropped out of the state representative thing, I found that out.
Well, that has no bearing. The reason Morgan was mayor was because the mayor position has different resident requirements. To be a mayor, yeah.
You have to live in the city.
Uh, you just gotta live in the city. Or be present physically, or with intent to have domicile.
The mayor that lets the office appointed him as mayor.
Oh.
And it.
What do you mean have domicile?
What, uh, physical domicile, or, you know.
Or water bill?
With intent, water bill, electric bill, not necessarily water bill, cause water bill would be outside Mountain Pine City Limits.
That, that is sketchy at best.
But a wa- a council member, you have got to reside, definition of reside, in the city limits, and reside in your ward. Two requirements.
Yeah, reside.
Reside in your ward.
That means having water bill.
No, that means being there.
Living there.
Reside don't mean a water bill.
So you don't have to live here to be mayor?
Uh?
You don't have to live here to be mayor?
No, you have to have a physical presence here or property to be mayor. With or with an intent to domicile, or reside.
I'm just curious, I just couldn't get it all.
Well, I know that.
He never intended to move into the city of Mountain Pine.
But he was physically here, though.
I wasn't trying to make an argument, I was just curious.
But I, I mean, you know, that, like I say, that would, you would have to go to the Supreme Court to get a ruling. But the ruling is already there on the Supreme Court.
Yes.
No. Cause the Supreme Court establishes a voter in the city, or in a city, as being a person that uh, uh, is physically present on a day-to-day basis, or has the intent of residing within the city limits.
How long does the intent, if you intend?
They didn't, they didn't specify in their, in their case notes to the Supreme Court.
See, can I do everything but live here? I mean, it's so close to living here, it ain't funny. Cause you can't go nowhere but come to here to get to my house. Cause I mean, when you make, when you go to my house, you ain't got nowhere to go but come here.
What if you got property on, in the, in that ward, and you need to live in that ward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if only you come and go to my house, you're coming here.
You're liking the, you're liking the one aspect, whether it's on the one requirement for a mayor.
I won't be mayor, that's too much work.
Well, I think the mayor should be a resident. He should be required to be a resident.
Who?
I think it does state.
Well, it does, yeah.
It does.
It does state that.
But the Supreme Court, I ain't got a book, I'd show you in the book.
But knowing what she said, that the other mayor, I think it was Rick Petty, appointed him
Yes.
as, okay, but then he ran.
But you can't, you can't appoint a mayor. Like, the, Morgan woke up finding out he was mayor. It was completely, it was a total cluster of a mess, and essentially, Morgan loves Mountain Pine, so he went ahead and did it, and he stuck with it until so many people gave him so much crap. The state tried to sue, or somebody tried to sue him, and he just said it. And all, all, you know, like, it's, it's so irrelevant. It's so irrelevant, like.
But it's not really with what that he's asking, doesn't mean he have to live in here.
Yes, they do, they do. By God, they do, or you're getting sued if you don't. I mean, it's just, and that's fine, you know, that's fine, he just.
Well, and it's only, it's only right, if you're not out here, and you're not living in the city, you're not seeing what the people want.
Well, no, I'm here every day, don't get me wrong. I'm here every day, so.
Well, Morgan was too, but he wasn't.
But, okay, but let me ask you this, though. This goes back to what I was saying about our millage rates. If you claim all of your personal property
Mm-hmm.
At the forty-three point five percent.
Don't get me started on property tax.
Well, ours is forty-eight point five. Do you see what I'm saying?
You don't understand.
If you're real, if you do your personal property assessed in the city, along with the house, that's probably a different story.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, we're really compared tax appeals. I promise you, you don't.
No, the part, the point of it is, there's a difference between county tax and state tax.
Yes, yes.
I pay about six thousand dollars a year.
Can I please ask a question, and you may not be able to answer this right now, but if you, I may need to get with you afterwards, but I'm interested in the process that is in place, or that you guys have to abide by on basically, um, like on abandoned properties, right?
Condemned property.
Yeah, like what the process is, I'm curious about what it is for my own industry that I'm in.
We have, we have been trying to get through this ourselves, ever since I started, but we have went through lawyer after lawyer. That's why we haven't got very far.
Well, is, is it, what I'm, like, do you guys, is there an established process somewhere that I can, like, s- see, not just necessarily for the city of Mountain Pine, but in general, the government has to go through?
I'm sure that there's gotta be something, but I'm not. that there's gotta be something, but I'm not
A hundred percent on, yeah, I, there's, it's a lot.
I leave it up to the lawyer.
If you wanna know about a property, you need to go down to the tax assistant's office.
Well, I'm a
You need to locate the property. Find a, find a map, we've got a map in here. What are you letting?
Because I have literally made an entire plat of both sides of the city from scratch.
You can go on the internet, G I.
No, I know, that's not what I'm asking.
And who to get a hold of, and that's the same problem we are all running into.
Like, I know who owns it, but they're ignoring me, you know, and so essentially, yeah. A lot of people are ignoring me. I've reached out to a lot of people that have abandoned properties, most of them through tax sale and they're out of state, which is super frustrating. And so my goal is obviously to get a hold of these people, offer them, offer them money so we can clean it up, right? But I'm like, there has to be some type of something legally that these people, like, almost need, like, I feel like they need to start getting cited. And then eventually it stacks up, and then the city can take the property, but then the city has to pay to clean it up, which I get is five thousand dollars at minimum, right? So that's expensive. Yeah, like, so it's expensive. And so that's why the company I work for is trying to help the city, but I was curious what the laws were so that I can dangle that in front of people, hey, look, if you don't, if you don't do something with this property, I'm gonna start ruffling the city's feathers about it, and you're gonna start getting bills in the mail, getting cited.
And that's what we were hoping to get every time we started, is to the next step.
But then we have one die, quit.
Right, right.
That's what I was saying.
And it's not because we don't want to get to the next step, because we do.
But there's legal rules that we
But we, we want to do it, it's completely valid.
Right, well, what I wanna do is essentially, um, li- like, leading up to, like, I use fear, right? Fear, like, you are going to start getting a fat fine, you need to call me. And, I mean, that's, that's just me being realistic, and then that way, eventually, it can pluck away at these properties, and then the city's not having to fork out so much money to constantly have to clean up these properties that you obtained through that legal process. So anyways, I would just like to
Enjoy cleaning them up, because that's why we get to keep the property. Then it becomes property of the city.
Well, I don't, I don't know the term in the, in the real estate business.
Well, you just go by whatever our attorney recommends through the process.
Okay.
So
Well, I've got his name now, so I'll reach out to him, yeah.
We don't need to use fear to clean up these people's property, we need to help
These are people that don't live here, that live out of state, or they have abandoned these properties.
We don't need to scare them into selling off.
We're gonna help you, we're gonna help you get rich, we wanna help our city.
So that's where the first break, yeah, that's where the first breakdown is, whereas Miss Andy just said we need to work together, and I'm throwing out an opportunity.
I'm just wondering, you put letters out?
Yes, we have.
But when's the last time you put one out?
Well, with, with the
A new one, I mean, I know you put old out a year ago.
Yeah, and the next lawyer wasn't here long enough to get them out. And now we have a new lawyer.
Now, I mean, you, you've been out for a year, I know at least. But you hadn't, you hadn't put no more out, letting it get a hold of?
We haven't, because, like I said, we went to another lawyer.
We got one now.
And we got another one now, and that is one of the processes that we have been working on.
And one thing else, you got a cat problem too. Everybody knows that, we got a big cat problem in Mountain Pine.
We, one of our neighbors
Stephanie Morgan.
My house ain't for sale, baby.
Well, we're gonna have a lot of really nice ones up for selling this town eventually.
Any more questions?
Just come get your building permit, I like that.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All in favor? All opposed?